It's seven o'clock and, oh, no, not quite. Seven o'clock now, yes. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons, Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan, Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
I'll take a moment to recognize the passing of, send our sympathies to the Ammons family. Carol Ammons' mother passed away a few days ago, so, and details are forthcoming. But there's a service on Saturday morning at Mount Olive. Visitation at 10:00, funeral at 11:00 on Saturday. Are there any additions to the agenda? Mayor?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One of them is a draft of a resolution in support of improved legislation to protect drinking water. As we've been talking, when we talked about the consent decree, we talked about the need to continue working on legislation. And the other one is about a liquor license for Lumen Incorporated, and we got the things kind of late and couldn't get it on to the regular agenda, so I just wanted you to know about that.
So is there a motion to add these to the bottom of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let go.
Thank you.
Is there a staff report at this time?
Yes.
Mayor?
Okay, I have a report on the delayed state payments. I asked our Finance Director, Elizabeth Hannan, to give us the details, and I've got this thing to hand out to you. So they've delayed paying us about $280,000 in revenue so far, and this is concentrated in video gambling, the state use tax, and the state motor fuel tax. And I have a chart following my memo prepared by Elizabeth Hannan, which gives you the details. But on an annual basis, this would be a loss of almost $2 million. So I don't, I certainly hope it doesn't last for a whole year, but since we have a great deal of uncertainty about the state budget right now, we, the city, need to proceed very cautiously with our spending.
Any questions for the mayor? Dan?
Well, at what point do we as a city make a statement about this? Can we?
We can make a statement any time we want.
Can we pass a resolution urging people to resolve this impasse?
Sure, we could do that. I think working with other organizations, too, is good. I know IML keeps up the pressure, but we talk to our local legislators. I think they're very well aware of the amount of difficulty this is creating for ordinary people. So, but everything helps. So if you want to drop a resolution, that'd be fine.
Yeah, I was wondering, Dennis?
You know, I was just going to say the same thing. I mean, what can we do? What magic pill is there to make this change, make the flow begin?
Eric?
So I don't know how many of you saw Tom Kasich's column, but Tom suggested to Julia Reitz that she seek to indict the members of the state government for failure to, failure to implement their duties, for dereliction of duty.
Fiduciary responsibility. Does it apply to the governor and the legislators?
I think this would apply to the governor and perhaps the governor and the legislative leaders, or, you know, yeah, something like that.
That would be interesting. Anyway, I would be interested in what other organizations, township groups, IML, and others are ratcheting up the pressure and what we could do, so, you know. Others under staff report. Okay, next up is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move approval.
Any items to correct? I've got two.
You're a better reader than I am.
Okay, under others present, there's an extra "from Bishop King James Underwood" in there. I'm not sure what the "from" applies to. And then on the, on item six, third page, it says, "Prior to the voice vote, I made a motion to split the proposed ordinance," and I thought it was Eric who seconded that.
May very well have, yes.
This, the motion to split the proposed ordinance, does that require a, does that require a, it's on page, it's right here. It was sort of informally done to split it. Oh, Dennis seconded it? Oh, okay, okay.
I might have, and that's a whole week ago, so, or two weeks ago.
I know somebody seconded it, and we sort of, sort of all nodded that we agreed to do it, so, yeah, okay.
Oh, it was an old gray-haired guy. We all look alike. Sound alike.
Okay, so, yeah, something, some, I know that that was, that was, I think it was pretty clear that we wanted to do that, so, and it was unanimous. So any other corrections? Singing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved as corrected. Next up is public input. First item is from Bishop King James and Dr. Reverend, Dr. Reverend Underwood, Dr. Evelyn Underwood, I'll get it, right here. They don't wish to speak at the moment, but they continue to be concerned about the sewer problems in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. Sorry about that. And next up is Alvarez Dixon from University of Illinois Extension. Sir? Just, yeah, grab a seat, pull the microphone there close to you, and that'll pick up your voice.
Evening, Mayor and all. Good to, good to see you all here today. And what I'm, what I want to take just a moment of your time to talk with you about is something that, though many may have heard of, I think few are aware of what it looks like to this day, and that is the University of Illinois Extension 4H program, the Youth Development Program. I imagine if I were to ask for a raise of hands, there, there might be some at least on the panel that would say you've heard at least of 4H and is familiar with 4H. I imagine that would be the case. Yes?
Several of us are College of Ag alumni here.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, so-
And at least one is a 4H, former 4H member.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. The, the new piece that often comes at a surprise to most folks, even those who are familiar with 4H, is the fact that 4H, we like to say a bit tongue-in-cheek, is more than just about agriculture, more than just about farming and growing. It is still about that, but it's so much more as well. It involves hands-on learning, where young people have an opportunity to engage with adults in a volunteer capacity and engage in lots of kinds of hands-on learning that actually apply still to this day to the kinds of things that they can engage in as later adults. So things like STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, which we are often hearing about within our school systems and, and our employers that say what kinds of skills are really important. I want to bring to your attention tonight that 4H is still a part of that business of engaging young people in those areas as well, as well as leadership and independence and generosity and skill mastery and some other areas as well. So what I'm here today really to ask of you is two things. One, to invite you to attend, to stop by and visit something that we are doing called Lights On After School. That is a national initiative, actually, that's been going on now for some years. October 22nd is the date, and on this date, after-school programs all over the country join together to highlight the importance of out-of-school time involvement for young people. We all have heard the statistics in one version or another about how critical the time it is for our young people when they come out of school. Between that time of 3:00 and about 6:00 o'clock in the evening, does very critical time. Lots of decisions and choices are made. Many of them are not positive, unfortunately. And what we have found through the research throughout the years is that after-school involvement, positive after-school involvement absolutely does make the difference. And there are wonderful programs that are, that exist here in Urbana and in our community that are serving young people outside of the school time. And this day, October 22nd, is a day to highlight that. It's a day to celebrate that. It's a day to call attention to that. And so this is giving an invite to you to, to participate in that. So there may be an after-school program across this area that will, that will be hosting events, that I'm not sure. But I do know that we are going to be hosting an event at what we call the EC3, which is the Extension Creative Community Commons. I have, Mayor, you, you may already by now have received this information, but I brought a copy of it today as well. It's a letter that, that asks first the invitation for you to, for you to join us on that evening, but also it asks for a proclamation that, that October 22nd would be declared in our area.
You have one minute, Mr. Dixon.
Okay, sure, thank you. That, that it would be declared in our area as Lights On After School, so that it's highlighted to the community to keep the lights on, really, during those after-school, after-school times. Just wanted to, with the last bit of seconds, just wanted to let you know, we have served in the past year 167 youth that are residents of Urbana, and that includes several types of 4H clubs that have existed through after-school programs as well as in the community. Robotics, cooking, yearbook photography, BattleBots, an Asian-American club, an African-American club, Canaan Academy after-school program, and a program that's specifically designed to target Latino youth and engage them in a program we call Sena y Ciencias, which is Supper and Science. And so check those things out, and I have some information that I can leave with more contact if you wish to find out more about the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Questions? I have a quick one. Would a joint proclamation with Urbana and Champaign be okay? Because I know that's how the mayor likes to do these.
It would be, it would be, and they were, the request was sent there as well, so they would be familiar. Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have a couple of people who want to speak about Sister City, but before we jump into that, because I know it's got some slides, anybody else from the public want to speak on any issue? Okay, singing on Michael, you want to get started on Sister City stuff? I think Dennis is going to follow up with some slides.
Hello, Council. First of all, Michael Kilcolin, and I'm the Sister Cities Committee, and I've been working with the Téonville France Project for the past two years now, three years. So first of all, on behalf of the committee, as well as our community, the people that came to our public things, the university, I want to thank all of the council for the support, for the approval of the project in the first place. Our visits there and the visiting that they came to make with us last week has been just wonderful, and it's a very exciting future, I think, that we have starting some plans for the future, and we just appreciate all your, your support for the, for the projects. We had a wonderful time. We put a lot, a lot of work all summer, meeting every week, but everything went well. We had no, no major problems, no, nothing went wrong, so it was quite successful, and it was very exciting. And some of it was, you know, you, some of you guys came to some of our events, so we appreciated that, and you got to meet everyone from France, I believe. I think everyone did at one point. So I hope that you guys enjoyed the events that we hosted for you and the community as well. So we have some photos, though, that all of us were taking pictures, so Dennis has amalgamated a few different people's photos, and we're going to show the city and the council a few of our people and events that we've done.
Thanks, Mike. But it sure is great to have a person on the committee that speaks French fluently when I don't, so his help has been so helpful and good. So I'm just going to go through a slideshow with you. Let's see, and, yeah, I guess I better just keep it with the buttons here. So hello, this is just the visit, this is like a summary, kind of a visual summary of where we went. First of all, here's the group that came from France, you know, standing in the city building. Michael, I mean Stefan Mokels is checking out the flag, the fact that we have the flag of France flying up above the, near the ceiling. And these are the people who joined us. Muriel, Laurent, Anne, Anne Marella, Jackie, Brigitte, Christiane, and Stefan. These are all, interesting, the mayor, Anne Gromerj, is elected, and she brings with her, she has 43 sub-councilors and counselors that she assigns to tasks to fulfill her duties and her vision in the city. So these people all are on the same ticket. They all come in together. They work together constantly, and they're very close friends and have a lot of enthusiasm. Very different from our city council elections and assembly as we, as we're familiar with it. Thanks to the MTD and for taking us here and there on the bus. Certainly an important thing that happened for us to get to destinations. One of the first things we did was walk through the city on a tour, and one of our stops was at the high school, where they later on another day visited classes. And across the street, we went into Carl Park and met Michelle, is it Miller? I think it is, Michelle Miller, who is a French-speaking woman who happened to live right behind the statue for many, many years, and she greeted our French visitors. And they were very impressed by the park. They took a tour of the park. Here's Charlie talking about different points about the trees. We have some really significant trees in that park, and he was pointing several things out. Then we went, we went down to Meadowbrook Park and walked through there, and then we came back into town and began walking in the city itself, and we stopped at the Lincoln Historic Site, right there near Bucie Bank. And we, they wanted to stop at the sheriff's office. Unfortunately, he was in a meeting and couldn't come out, but they did try to talk to him. They stopped for arrest near the library. They went into Pizza M, and they noticed that the library's bulletins about the, the meet and greet at the library the following day was up on the bulletin board. So here's Mayor Gromerj pointing it out. Stopped at a Urbana Cabana for a snack and proceeded on. Yes, yes, and here you go, say that right in there. And then they walked through the Boneyard Creek improvements. They were very impressed. They saw, you know, how we had transformed the creek bed, and, you know, their, their riverbed, their riverway is also, you know, well-appointed and has a walk along it and is very nice in their city. They were fascinated by the sculptures that were in the Creek Park area, and they even talked. They were so, they were so intrigued by it that they said that they had a park in Téonville that featured animals, animal sculptures, and they were asking us whether one of these could be shipped over in exchange for something that they had. And I said, what a great idea, and then I began thinking about how practical that, Mayor, may not be, but I don't know, we'll see. It was an idea that was surfacing that might be the first time we do an art exchange with France. That'll take a little bit of funding. We went then to Silver Creek for lunch. Here are some photographs of people meeting and interacting with our guests. And of course, the French were excited to meet Anne and Kermit Harden, who were on our trip to France last November. And they are in, deeply remembered in heart by the, by the members of the French delegation, so they greeted Anne very cordially and Kermit. And here's the group at the restaurant. Beautiful day. Some of the group wanted to go shopping, and so Charlie wasn't-
Had to.
Had to. Well, one of the reasons being that the mayor's luggage didn't arrive with her, so, and also Jackie Hofgut, he didn't have his luggage either.
I'm just going to interject that I did more shopping in the two days they were here than I've probably done all year.
And you did good shopping, too, from what I saw. So they were very, very insistent that shopping was important, and we made room for that on the agenda. Then we went on Thursday night to the Demett's home, and they experienced an American traditional Thanksgiving meal. And we have some pictures of the interactions. There's John and Angie Demett, our hosts during the evening. The Hardens provided the food, and they provided the house hospitality and the cooking. It was a very nice display of food, all very traditional. And, yeah, Evelyn was there, yes, she, she remembered, she, that was, it was a wonderful meal. There's Angie in the kitchen and John Demett Jr. helping out at the table. And one of the special things that happened was that this, an embroidered throw, I guess you would call it, or a blanket commemorating some of the scenes around the University of Illinois was presented to the mayor of Téonville by the Hardens in gratitude for the help that they had received when they were visiting. It was a really nice thing. The next morning, we went to visit the schools, and I only have a single picture from that. I, well, I have a couple of pictures, but you'll see a few. This is from King School, where they visited the programs, and they were looking for the French program, but that teacher wasn't there, so they visited a Chinese-speaking classroom and some of the other facilities. They went to the library, where there was two or three classes diligently doing interactive work. Very impressed, and the flags of the nations were all around the perimeter on this, on the top of the bookcases. They pointed out that the French flag was present. And they had a French book, yes, that they were very interested in that. They went then to the Urbana Public Works Department. I wanted to say that they also went to, they went, they went to French class at the junior high school and the high school, so I don't have photographs of that, though. They also, the day before, had taken a tour of the University of Illinois and had walked on the campus, met a person involved in interactions with the French, with the University of Luxembourg. She's an instructor at the U of I Law Department. And they also met the instructors at the French, the School of French Language, now known as FIT.
And the head.
And the head of the department greeted them, yes. So this is the Public Works Department, and they were fascinated by the big equipment. Christiane is, represents the fire and the police department and their needs in the city of Téonville, so she was standing by the truck. She was enjoying that, and Bill Gray, you know, gave them a, kind of a nice tour and told them a little bit about the duties and responsibilities that he experiences handling all their needs of the city. Then we went to the city building, and they met Chief Conley and, you know, had a small meeting there. One of the fun things that happened at that meeting, besides trading official patches, was that Chief Conley explained a very significant thing that happens between the chiefs of police from around the state and, I guess, the country, and that is that if you're, if you're hosting at an event and you could pull out your mark or your marker and put it on the table, you don't have to buy the next beer. And he passed that, he passed a marker on to Mayor Gromerj, and she was very fascinated by that, and then she said, "I've got the marker, so the rest of you have to pay." Next time around. We went to the fire department, and endless fascination with the fire department and its equipment and its environs, and Chief Nightlinger and Fire Marshal Phil entertained them with talk and explanation. And notice in the bottom corner, our chief, our chief is wearing a very sporty kind of helmet. This was a present from the delegation from France, and this is their typical, I don't know, they have a dress helmet, I don't know, but it's, looks to me it's gold-plated. So he tried it on, and of course, they had to take a photograph of that. We went downstairs. Phil, Fireman Phil slid down the pole, which was an exciting event, but a lot of attention was placed on the hook-and-ladder truck, which was then extended and occupied the next 15 minutes of everybody's attention. But it didn't prevent anybody from getting into the fire truck and trying to drive it off. So then we had to walk over to the library to take a tour of the library. There's, there's the mayor and Jackie, and also the director of the library, Celeste Choat, giving them a tour down in the children's room. Great-looking amenity in the library for children. We did have a display in the main hall of the library, and Michael took this picture of it, which I appreciate, because I forgot to take a picture of it. And it explained that we were going to have visitors.
It was in the month of August, too.
Yes, it was in the month of August, but it prepared everybody in the city for not only our Chinese visit, but our, our French delegation's visit. And during that time in the library, we were hosted to a wonderful dinner by, hosted by our own Michael Madigan and his business barbecue, and there was interviews and discussions and presentations. The library gave Mayor Gromerj a, a membership card, and we were entertained by the CU Superstars, which is funded by the Arts Council, and they did a couple of songs, very entertaining. The French loved it. We went upstairs then for the meet and greet with the public, and we have some photographs here of all those people who came to say hello to our delegates from France. They just walked in. There was cookies and some punch, and here's a picture of them outside. These are our newest friends of the library here in Urbana. They were very enthused about the library. And our next important stop was to visit the home of the president of the university, President Kailene. We were invited to a reception at his home, and these are photographs of some of the presentations that were made. President Kailene spoke and welcomed them. Gifts were given to our mayor, a document concerning the, I guess it was one of the charters, early charter of the city of Téonville. Mayor Gromerj spoke with words of thank you, and then they presented the president of the university with a historic map, a reproduction of a historic map, the first map of the city of Téonville, and it was designed as a fort originally, with the city enclosed within battlements for protection. Then we just had entertainment. We enjoyed each other's company, got a chance to talk and interact. A good, a nice photograph was taken of the group, city council members and representatives of Téonville. And the last thing I have a photograph of was on Saturday morning, several of the group went to a football game at the U of I. We were guests of the Chancellor's Department at the 50-yard line, and I was there in the parking lot to pick them up and help them get to Chicago. And guess what happened? They all came out wearing Illini jerseys, and they said they had a great time. The marching bands assembled from not only the U of I, but from a multitude of local high schools performed, and they said they had never seen anything like that in their assemblies. It was an awesome experience. So we bid them adieu, and we hope to see them again.
Questions for Dennis and Michael?
We're just in awe, aren't we?
We did have a good time, Diane.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to the committee for the excellent organization and a really phenomenal visit. So I know it was a tremendous amount of work. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we had a lot of help. And I will say that these people are fun. These people are not real super serious. I mean, they, they're, they're smart, they're intelligent, but they really have a sense of fun, and I think that this Sister City relationship could be quite, quite a good one to evolve.
The mayor has the proclamation.
I would like to say at the beginning that when I brought my first baby home from the hospital, then I knew I was an agent of change. So this is about diapers. Whereas, diaper needs- Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three mothers experiencing diaper need at some time with their children are less, when their children are less than three years of age. And 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of 50 diaper changes per week over three years. And whereas diapers cannot be bought with food stamps or WIC vouchers, therefore obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas the supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infant and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas the people of Urbana recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And whereas Urbana is proud to be home to various community organizations that recognize the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to poor families through various channels. Now therefore, I, Laurel Lunt Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of September 28th through October 4th, 2015, as Diaper Need Awareness Week in the city of Urbana and encourage the citizens of Urbana to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate diaper need in Urbana and environs. Thank you. Is there someone here to pick up this proclamation? Okay, thank you for your work helping families.
If it's appropriate, I might mention one place at least that I know of, which is accepting diapers and distributing them through the Garden Hills Food Pantry where they volunteer, and that's the McKinley Presbyterian Church in Champaign. So if anybody who can get diapers to McKinley Foundation, you can be certain that they will get where they're needed through that avenue. And perhaps, you know, there might be some others that could be mentioned. That's the one that I, that I'm aware of.
Okay, next up is ordinance number 2015-9101, an ordinance approving amendment number one to an agreement for use of right-of-way with Metro Communications Company, Bill Gray, Public Works.
Thank you. What's before you is Metro has come in with a new request for additional fiber extensions from their system. The three locations are Ray Street between Florida and Windsor, Fagel Road between Florida to Colorado, and Colorado from Fagel Road east to the Prairie, Wind Circle Street. So these three locations are part of the request and it would be the customary license agreement we've had with other fiber companies. And we ask for your approval.
Questions for Bill? Is there a motion? Diane?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Oh, I guess I move that we send this...
To council.
Ordinance to council with a recommendation for approval.
And I'll second that.
Okay, a move by Dan Marlin, seconded by Dennis Roberts to send this to council. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, it goes to council. Thank you, Bill. Now the challenge tonight will be for me to keep track of Elizabeth Libby's and Beth's. Ordinance number 2015-9102, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2015/16 annual budget, rebudgets, and other miscellaneous items financed. And Elizabeth?
All right. This budget amendment is made up mostly of rebudgets, and that's a term that may be new to you, but generally those are items that were included in last year's budget for major expenditures like capital improvements or capital equipment. And if those expenditures did not take place before June 30, they were, you know, mostly due to timing issues, then we need to budget those again in this fiscal year to provide the funds. Some other changes in the general fund. We will amend the budget to show the revenue from the distribution of unspent TIF III funds, a couple of other small corrections in the general fund. There are some changes in some of the grant funds that belong to community development and those are all related to timing of expenditures and when we draw down grant funds. Other minor expenditures related to the tree planting program and to damage to city trees, recognizing contributions for the social services fund that were not made by the end of the last fiscal year, budgeting donations to the sister-city program and related expenditures. Dennis has been rounding up quite a few contributions. And just some issues with timing and some development contributions for cake design. So I'm not going to go through all of the gritty detail. There's probably hundreds of line items there, but if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Bill?
So if it was something that just came in under budget, but it was already done, would that be a rebudget? Would that, what would happen to that extra money?
It would just go back into fund balance in the general fund.
So like on the garage rehab improvement, it shows about a half million dollars rebudgeted. What's left to do on it? Is it done? It just hasn't been paid for yet, or is there still something left to do on that?
I'm going to let Bill take that one.
We are just in the process of awarding a contract for a contractor to start work on that garage rehab work. So work is poised to begin here pretty soon.
Okay, so it hasn't even started yet?
Hasn't even started yet, right.
And then I did, thanks, I think that covered that question. I did think of a question about the other thing that you gave us about the delayed payments. I know when I get a delayed payment for my dental bill from the state, I get a pretty good rate of interest on there. Have they talked about what kind of rate of interest we'll get for our delayed payments?
They haven't talked about much at all. Mostly we're finding misinformation out because we're asking. So no, I, I mean, they do allocate interest on our payments generally if they are delayed, but I don't know that that's going to apply in this case.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
I don't know which of you might elucidate a little bit about fees related to damaged trees in the city. I know we have ice damage during the winter and what is the damage?
These, these would be more like, let's say, some, let's say somebody gets into an auto accident and hits a tree. We will actually send them a bill to, to require them to pay for that damage. And then since, since we can't necessarily amend the budget every time that happens, we'll wait until the end of the fiscal year and then the following year, we'll budget that money to be spent for replacement or...
So we've had a lot of mistreatment of trees recently. Seven thousand dollars worth? Are our trees really expensive? I just thought that was such an interesting item.
Trees are really expensive.
I guess they are. A full, a full-grown tree, yes. Thanks.
Yeah, especially if you have to clear it after it's been damaged heavily, so. And other questions? I have, I have two real quick ones. How did we do this in the past?
I, I know that last year, there were some rebudgets that were done without benefit of council approval. I can't speak to how these were always done in the past, but my understanding of the city code and state law is that it requires a budget amendment approved by the city council.
So just because it was in last year's budget isn't sufficient then? Or, I mean, if it was budgeted in last year and approved, why wouldn't it just happen?
No, it's not sufficient.
Oh, okay. And my other question was, I noticed that, and probably should have seen this the first time, I guess, Community Development Block Grant Fund is in the red. Is that just, is that the timing issue?
Yeah, with several of the grant funds, we actually have to spend the money before we can draw on the federal funds. So Community Development Block Grant is one of those funds that's often going to show a deficit.
Okay. Other questions? Diane?
So what's the impact of not receiving the motor fuel tax funds from the state? What, what will citizens see?
Today, they won't see any difference, but at some point, our fund balance will go down and it's possible, if this, if this continued, we may have to delay some projects that have motor fuel tax funding. So, but right now, all the projects that are currently going on, I think we're, we're fine. But at this point, it's, it's not going to impact us unless it continues for six or more months, so.
Dennis?
Yeah, okay, so I'll make a motion to send ordinance number 2015-09102, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2015 to 16 annual budget, rebudgets, and other miscellaneous items to council with approval.
Second, spin moved by Roberts, seconded by Jacobson. Further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right goes to council. Thank you. Next up is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Champaign for mobile meter sub-licensing. This is Resolution 2015-953R. And, oh, Beth and Vince.
It was a team effort.
Okay.
Because we both love being in front of you so much. Getting used to it now. Before we start with the video, or our slideshow and our video presentation, just kind of want to give you a little history. I'm sure you read the memo, but I'll just go ahead and say it for all the viewers out there. About two years ago, the city was told by our parking meter vendor that the cash key was no longer supported and the technology was outdated. And we wouldn't be able to get replacement parts. And then right about that time, the cash keys kind of got a little more expensive and they weren't as reliable. So we decided that this would be a good indicator to start looking for another way that people can pay for the meters cashless. We had already met with people like IPS, where they have the digital electronic meters that, you know, you go right up to it, you swipe your card. Those meters are very expensive. Champaign even did a pilot program and they decided not to go with those. We knew that the university already had a pay-by-sell vendor that they've been using for the last at least five years. And so we really thought the way to go here was to find something that could provide an option to our customers without having to change our meter infrastructure. So in 2014, in the fall, Vince and I went out to the National Parking Association and we met with several different pay-by-sell vendors. And when we came back later on that year, we put together an RFP and we released that. And this is kind of what we want to discuss with you. So pay-by-sell is an efficient and a convenient way to pay for metered parking while using a mobile phone or a web browser. There are four ways that you can pay. You can download a mobile app, you can use mobile web, voice recognition, or you can First-time registration is quick and easy. It actually takes less than two minutes for the first time that you set it up and pay for the meter. Payment can be made without having to be at the meter. You can receive mobile notifications five minutes before your parking session expires. And you can also extend your parking session up to the maximum time allowed at the meter.
Beth touched a bit on our selection process. As she said, in October 2014, we met with vendors at the National Parking Association Conference. As a result of those meetings, we were able to put the information together that we used to draft an RFP for pay-by-sell services. And that RFP was released in December of 2014. And as a result of that, we received proposals from six separate pay-by-sell vendors. Those proposals were evaluated based on scope of services as outlined in the RFP, a company overview, total costs involved, and their experience in municipal settings such as ours. We found that two of the vendors were equally qualified and those finalists were selected to come here to us and present an in-person presentation for, for a panel of city staff. We determined that Passport Parking, with their offering of the Mobile Meter Custom Brand app, that they were the selected preferred pay-by-sell vendor. So why Mobile Meter and Passport? Mobile Meter and Passport will allow a seamless parking payment system at both City of Urbana and City of Champaign parking meters. City of Champaign has had this program, program up and running since April of this year. They currently have 5,800 registered, excuse me, registered users. Once we have this up and implemented, they would immediately be able to use the same app on their phone to pay for our meters as well. As Beth said, Mobile Meter will be a suitable replacement for the cash key and provide that cashless payment options for the users who don't wish to carry coins. Mobile Meter and Passport also offers a merchant validation program. Now what this will allow is local businesses to go online on the website and create their own account. When customers come to visit their store, they'll be able to offer them a discount code. So if you pay for your parking with Mobile Meter, you'll enter that discount code into the app and the retailer will be able to pay for your parking session. At whatever rate they determine, they'll be able to manage that online themselves without the use of city staff. Along with businesses being able to create their own accounts, individual users will be able to use a virtual wallet or wallet program where they can prepay into an account for future parking stays. I envision parents of U of I students being able to fund an account so that their sons and daughters can park at Urbana meters directly with their app. Another program that Passport and Mobile Meter offers is a fleet program. This will allow local businesses to pay for their employees' vehicle parking at City of Urbana meters. So the business can go in, create an account, fund that account, and give all of their employees a user login and PIN so that they could pay rather than, excuse me, reimbursing their parking or giving them coins or even having to come to our office in a reload time on the existing cash key. At this time, we'd like to present a short video that we would like to propose as a tool to help educate and promote potential users on the Mobile Meter program.
Hi, my name's Beth Beatty and I'm the Administrative Services Manager at the City of Urbana.
And I'm Vince Gustafson with the City of Urbana Department of Public Works.
Together, we would like to introduce an easy and convenient way to pay for parking at City of Urbana meters. Staff has partnered with Passport Parking and City of Champaign in order to bring our customers Mobile Meter.
Mobile Meter will allow customers to pay for parking at Urbana meters using their smartphone, Android, or iPhone, cellphone, or other web-enabled device.
Mobile Meter offers a quick and easy registration process. You can simply download the app, visit the website, or call by phone.
Once registered, customers can access their account by using a phone number and PIN. All vehicle and credit card information is kept secure. Using the Mobile Meter app is simple and straightforward. Begin by entering your PIN to log into the account. Enter the zone and space number from the decal located on the parking meter. Next, select the amount of time you wish to park and confirm the purchase. Rates and maximum time may vary, so refer to the information located on the meter housing. In addition to the parking fee, a small convenience fee will be charged for using Mobile Meter.
Although the meter continues to flash expired, Mobile Meter will inform parking enforcement that the meter has been paid. As an added convenience, Mobile Meter customers will have the option of receiving tax reminders prior to the expiration of their paid time. In many instances, dependent on time zones, parking stays may be extended directly from the app or website without the need to return to the meter. We hope you found this video informative and are excited about becoming a Mobile Meter customer.
Our goal for Mobile Meter is to provide a simple and straightforward way to pay for parking at City of Urbana meters. parking at City of Urbana meters.
I'll just point out that while that was showing, I installed it.
Told you it was less than two minutes.
Well, I haven't signed up yet. I wasn't going to be that rude. Dennis.
Yeah, and so if you don't use your full time, do you get a refund?
You want me to answer that now, or finish the whole presentation?
No, go ahead. That was just inside, I guess.
As we saw in the video, what Mobile Meter users can expect is a one-time, easy registration. A simple, fast, and cashless way to pay for parking with a small convenience fee. Users will be able to manage all aspects of their profile, including requests for receipts by email. You'll be able to view your parking history, and you'll also be able to update your payment options at any time. You can expect customer support via the mobile app itself, the website, or live phone service during our current hours of meter enforcement.
As far as fiscal impact, from the current revenue that the city receives from meters, staff estimates 20% utilization rate for Mobile Meter transactions by the end of the first year. This projection would create a minimal increase in meter revenue from user fees and no piggybacking. And just for example, if I was to drive up to a restaurant to meet a friend, and there's two open spaces, I'm more likely to park at the space that has 20 minutes left on the meter. In this case, you wouldn't know that 20 minutes was left on the meter if someone had used a pay-by-sell transaction, but same concept. The collection of the 25-cent convenience fee will help to offset credit card and transaction fees and the costs associated with enforcement activities. So enforcement, because their ticket-writing devices do not support this type of technology, we would equip them with four smart devices, four tablets, one for each officer, and that would, you'd have the cellular data usage charges fees as well.
The mayor has a question here.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the convenience fee. So if, what are our meters right now?
So on campus and in the hospital, it's a dollar. Downtown is 25 cents.
Right, so if you have 25 cents for an hour to use this, you have another convenience fee, so it's going to cost you 50 cents.
It's going to. You would still, at this time, you would still have the option to pay coins if you don't want to pay a 25-cent transaction fee. Staff certainly intends to look at that rate in the downtown, but would like to have a little bit more data back from the pay-by-sell before we make those assumptions on, and decide whether or not we want to increase those.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, and then Diane.
What is the, what is the company's business model? Where do they, how do, where do they get their money?
Where do they get their money? From the transaction fee.
Okay, so their money is included in the 25-cent transaction fee?
Is included, yes. 10 cents goes to the company for every transaction. And I will point out, one of the, and I've used this several times in Champaign when I've been out, one of the really nice things is when I'm out to dinner, and I get that little notification, and maybe I'm not quite ready to leave yet, that I can just, you know, add 20 more minutes, and maybe 20 minutes goes by, and I'm still not really ready to leave yet, so I add 20 minutes again. But the great part is, you don't get charged every single time you extend it. It's when you close a session, it's just that one 25 cent. You know, I could keep extending, and as long as the meter time would allow, but I'm only going to get that one 25 cent, which compared to a parking ticket, I'm saving myself and probably my husband money.
Are you finished?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
So that just brought up another question. So when you extend by 20 minutes at a time, that's assuming you're paying in 20-minute increments, but, so in Urbana, you're paying for another hour, basically, if you extend the time?
In the downtown, that's probably how that would work, yes.
Given our current rates. Okay, so my other questions were, for people who have a cash key, are you going to phase that out? Will people be given a notice?
Yeah, so Champaign and the university in Urbana, we've all discussed this since we found out about it two years ago. We do plan on coming up with a phase-out for it. Having a tool like Mobile Meter and the Mobile Meter Wallet, that could actually, we could give incentives for people to maybe turn in their old cash key, maybe load some time on the wallet for them for turning it in. But customers of the cash key would certainly have a lot of advanced notice prior to that ever happening. And the city, at this point, we still intend anyone who has an active working cash key, we will continue to load time on that because our meters still accept the cash key. It's just that some point, we're going to have a lack of replacement parts from meters we have in inventory to replace those cash key receptacles.
Okay, so they won't be phased out when this new thing comes in?
Not immediately, no.
If, do you think that there will be reduced revenue from parking fines, then, if people have the option to renew and not? I would think that there'd be fewer tickets issued.
I would think parking fines, I haven't really, I would have to get back to you as far as what other municipalities are seeing. But I would, you're always going to get more revenue from compliance than what you are from ticket fines. It's having the enforcement staff out there and visible to keep people compliant, keep them paying their meters.
But a $10 or $15 parking ticket is a lot higher than a 25 cent an hour.
It is.
So I'm thinking, I admit, it's a good thing, it's good for people to have this notice. The other question I have is, do you actually need a parking meter to have? I'm thinking ahead, and there are, there are certain streets in Urbana where people park all day long for free because there are no parking meters there, and then go to the university. But could you identify spaces and have a space on a street and not have a meter there?
Yeah, I'm going to let Vince talk on this one. When we, when we were out at the conference, there was actually a case study.
In Galveston, Texas, there's an actual 10-mile stretch of beachfront where they've done no parking meters. They determined that the initial investment in the hardware was just, they couldn't come up with the funds to do that. So the vendor came in and installed signage, and it's simply pay-by-sell only along that 10-mile stretch of seawall. And if you don't have the cellphone or technology to make that, you're able to go into the local vendor, give them the space number, and they can type you into the system and pay that way.
And last question is, is the campus, are the U of I campus meters adopting the same company as well?
So I, we have been approached by people at the university, in university parking, we've had meters, or meetings, sorry, and they are very interested in also going with Mobile Meter, especially if Urbana does. The cash key was wonderful. We all had it. One key load university time, Champaign time, Urbana time. You didn't have to buy three separate things, and they're very interested in going with this as well.
Eric.
Just a comment, this system seems far superior to the pay-by-phone system that's on the campus now.
Bill? Oh, sorry.
No, it is. We were actually surprised that Pay-by-Phone, the company didn't submit a bid to this because they were actually one of the vendors we talked to when we were out at the conference. But this one just can offer so many things that they couldn't even come up with. They were willing to create a fleet program for us. That's why there's a target date for that in December, because we have so many contractors working on campus that, you know, their employees use the cash key, and they can't get new cash keys, and they use it so much all the time that this is going to be such a nice replacement tool for them to use and to monitor their employees' spending.
You have a few questions. Were you finished with your presentation, or did you have more?
Yeah.
One more slide. We're just recommending this evening a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Champaign that will allow us to sub-license the custom Mobile Meter app. And we're also recommending a resolution approving a contract with Passport Parking to provide the services that we've outlined here in this presentation. Pending final approval, we'll begin immediate work with Passport Parking on the technology and the system setup. This involves providing them all of our meter space numbers and locations, along with the appropriate rate and durations that go along with those. In conjunction with that, we'll begin on a marketing and a public relations program that will include the video we presented here on UP TV, as well as the city website, print ads in local newspapers, hopefully a few television spots. And we'll also do some print materials, brochures, flyers to distribute to the local businesses and to our meter crews to distribute when they're out on the streets collecting, and those questions do come up. We'll do a full systems test and begin staff training, which involves parking enforcement and their use of the tablets, best office staff, as well as training for the meter collection crews so that they can answer the questions that they're inevitably going to get out on the street. Once we're confident that everything is in the system and ready to go, Public Works operations staff will begin installing informational signages, informational signage along the metered areas, and begin physically placing the decals on the meters themselves. Once the decal is located on the meter, it will be ready for customers to start using. We're looking at a target start date of early spring 2016, and weather permitting, we may be able to get everything up and running by yet this fall.
Other questions? Mayor, then Bill.
I just want to thank you for your presentation. I think it was really well organized. Well done. I don't know if you're going to get an Academy Award, but you know, you did a good job. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, is there a minimum charge if somebody, I mean, can you park for a quarter? You can charge a quarter, there's no minimum.
Yeah, a quarter. A quarter would be the minimum charge.
Okay. And then, how did you estimate the 20% utilization?
Just based off of feedback from other municipalities.
Okay. It seems, as long as we reach that, it seems like it could be revenue neutral by the time you pay licensing fees and everything, but if we don't reach that, it'll probably be negative. I mean, I see this as pretty neutral revenue-wise, it's mostly a convenience for people.
I think we live in a pretty tech-savvy community, especially with the U of I. I would estimate that we would get similar utilization rates as others municipalities have.
And then, I'm surprised Charlie couldn't solve that in two minutes, because when I installed it last night, it took me a long time because I actually read the terms and agreement.
I said I haven't signed up. I just installed the app. That's all I did.
There is the terms of agreement and privacy policy that, you know, people should probably read. As far as...
We'll put something on the video to encourage that.
But then, yeah, it would take you an hour, so don't do it while you're trying to park. Do it beforehand. As far as the actual enforcement, you said workload for meter collection activities is reduced. I'm not sure how that will happen, because they'll still have to collect coins and...
Yeah, we currently collect our campus around three, three days weekly. If there is a physical reduction in the volume of coins, we may be able to reduce that from a three-day-a-week collection to a two-day-a-week collection. When the rate was 75 cents per hour, we would only collect twice per week. But when the rate, they'd go up to a dollar, they just couldn't handle the volume of coins in the high-density areas. So we're hoping that if we get the utilization on campus, we may, it may reduce that workload somewhat for other maintenance activities.
Okay, so it's a physical limitation of how many quarters the meters can load?
Exactly. If we don't go out and collect them, they will back up and jam.
Okay, and then as far as like enforcement goes, when, when the car is going around and ticketing people, does that, it seems like that could be harder because now it's obvious, you know, a red flag pops up, you ticket somebody now. If there's no red flag, you still have to check, or if there is a red flag, you still have to check your computer or something?
Yeah, so the tablet will, you know, they'll go down a street, let's say they're going down Matthews Street, and there's a certain, it's divided up with, maybe it's divided the 300 block of South Matthews. Well, all the meters that are paid by pay-by-sell are going to flash, they're going to be green on their map. And then all the ones that aren't will be red. And I'm just making this up, just for visual, to help me do it. But that will be an indicator to them what's been paid, what's not, what to look, they're already trained, the eye is trained to see if it's flashing. If it's flashing and it's green, they're going to drive on. If it's not flashing and it's red, then they're going to issue or let them, they paid the meter.
Okay, so they just have to look at two things now, instead of the meter, they have to look at the meter and the screen?
Right, yes.
Okay. And then, as far as the customer report, it says, it shows, one of the things on page, I'm looking at page 27 of their, I think it's their promotional, or maybe it was the RFP answers, is like a transaction report, daily total revenue, kind of things that, I guess this is management reporting information. The customer report says, "shows activity for a particular pay-by-phone parking customer." What would we use that for?
Maybe the customer calls, maybe they're disputing a ticket. We could look at that information to show that, yes, they paid the ticket, and they were wrongfully issued, or they paid for their space, and they were wrongfully issued a ticket.
So you'd look that up by ticket number or license plate number or something?
I would imagine by customer number, but as a Mobile Meter customer myself, I can pull that right up from my phone and look at it, and perhaps if I got a ticket, I would just take that in or take a picture of it and send it into the ticketing entity and ask them to dismiss that.
Okay, that makes sense. What I'm thinking about is, before, as it is now, you know, we only write tickets when somebody violates the law, and so then we have a record of them, and it's pretty limited what you use it for. It seems like this opens it up a little bit, because now we're collecting information on everybody, whether they, if they just parked and they're paying their meter, and whether they violated the law or not. So I'm a little curious if maybe this, if we need a, if we need a privacy policy for the city on how that data would be used, maybe that's something the attorney could think about. Since, I mean, I consider it personally identifiable information, so it could be that we, if we have some kind of privacy policy, maybe we could apply it to that.
We do currently, in our office, I mean, we all are held to a higher standard because we get a lot of vehicle information for the parking tickets that we issued when we do our collection of them with name and address of registered owner. So we do have those safeguards in place already. So we would treat this just the same way, just as a cash key customer, because we put your name in, you fill it out, they're, it's in our database, but we don't share that.
Okay. Yep, I think that was all the questions. Thanks.
Diane, did you have a question? Oh, okay. Jim?
There may be FOIA considerations, because once information is received by the city, it's considered a record, and, you know, any request pursuant to FOIA would have to be responded to consistent with the statute of exemptions or not.
Okay, I have a quick question. You know, Bill was going in the direction I was, which is this 20% utilization rate and whatever. Don't we have numbers from Champaign and what their numbers are?
Yes, and they're on target for their 20% utilization rate right now.
Okay, so they're, but they're not there yet, or they're...
They're not there yet. They only launched it April 7th, so they haven't really, they didn't have a lot of data other than what I included in my memo to you.
There are two motions here. Any other questions? Is there a motion? Dennis?
Yeah, okay, so...
Two resolutions, I should say.
Right, okay, so let's start with the first one. I move that Resolution 2015-09-053R, Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Champaign concerning Mobile Meter sub-licensing be approved and sent to the city council for approval.
Second.
Move by Dennis, second by Eric. Further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the second one would be Resolution 2015-09-054R, Resolution approving an agreement with Passport Parking Incorporated to provide for parking-free payment by cellphone. And I recommend that this be sent to the city council with a... I recommend that this be sent to the City Council with approval.
Second.
Moved by Dennis, second by Diane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Resolution 2015-955R, a resolution approving Amendment Numbers 1 and 2 to an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Office of the Comptroller, which is the local debt recovery program.
Hello.
That's Beth as well.
My name's Beth. Okay, so this gives me a little opportunity just to kind of let council know how successful the local debt recovery program has been inadvertently through oversight by staff for not obtaining proper approval, which I do apologize for that. City Finance Office was going kind of through a transitional period during that time and just did not occur. But in 2012 in September, we entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Office of the Comptroller, and what this did was it allowed the city to partner with the Comptroller's local debt recovery program in order to collect on outstanding parking fine debt. Prior to the state comptroller issuing a check, tax refund, a commercial payment, a lottery-winning, unclaimed property, or a payroll check, the amount owed to the local government entity is deducted and deposited into the comptroller's local debt recovery trust fund. The debtor is sent a written notice and has 60 days to appeal the deduction. If no appeal is made within the 60-day period, the amount owed is transferred to the local unit of government. In January of 2013, we submitted our first batch of unpaid parking ticket fines to the state, and to date, the state has offset more than 8,500 parking fines on our behalf and collected over $170,000 in revenue. That's how much we've received. The majority of the eligible accounts that we are submitting to the state are one to four tickets. What we do, our process, we send, the initial ticket is issued, then we will send a first notice, and then within a 60-day period, we will send a second notice. When someone only has one to four tickets, that's really all we can do. Can't do anything more with that unless there's a higher fine amount. We might send that up to legal for litigation, but other than that, we cannot immobilize the vehicle, we cannot send it off for suspension. So, the majority of the debt that the state has collected for us through the local debt recovery program has been these one to four tickets. And in September of 13, there was a first amendment to the intergovernmental agreement, and then in October of 13, there was a second one proposed. And what staff really would recommend, based on just the success of this program, it doesn't cost us anything, the costs are very minimal, there's not a lot of staff time involved, and the city, this year alone, is estimated to get about $35,000 in revenue from these outstanding parking ticket fines. So staff would really recommend approval of the proposed resolution so we can continue working with the state through the local debt recovery program.
Questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move sending to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dennis, to send this to council. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Resolution 2015-956R, a resolution approving and authorizing entering into and executing a second amendment to the intergovernmental agreement for fire protection services, authorizing the entering into and execution of a second amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana, City of Champaign, and the University of Illinois for fire protection services, non-personnel costs. Chief Nightlinger.
Okay, as noted in my, in the memo sent to the council members, this is a second amendment of an intergovernmental agreement that started in 1997 for fire protection services on campus. It came to my attention probably eight or nine months ago that our non-personnel costs have been flat for several years, that our costs increased every year, and the vehicle by which those could be increased had not been provided to the university in a number of years. So therefore, our non-personnel costs remain flat for a long time. So I requested of the university to look at a different method by which to fund these non-personnel costs, and my official request was, I think, May 1st. And so, they seriously took a look at it, and to my surprise, that they came up with a different method to fund our non-personnel costs. Because as you know, nobody is getting any more money from the state at this point, so I think it's a testament to the services the fire department provides the university. They appreciate our services, and we think it's a, it's been an excellent agreement for both the city and the university. And so, they now have proposed, in this memorandum, to increase our non-personnel costs by using a, they call it the DPI for Fire Protection, as published by the Illinois Municipal League. So that just looks at the cost of fire protection in the state of Illinois, the municipal league analyzes that, and they come out with a figure every year on what the increase is. And so, the university's chosen this method now to increase our non-personal costs every year. So, there was also a few other things that was included in this amendment. The original agreement had the CSAC Committee, which monitors the fire protection agreement, and the CSAC Committee was asked to meet more often than they need to. I mean, for the last several years, we've met once a year, so they wanted our intergovernmental agreement to reflect what we do. And it also changed who execute, has the executing authority for this agreement, and that's moved from the Secretary of the Trustees to the Comptroller. So, if you guys have any questions about this, I can answer them.
Questions? I have a real quick one. What exactly do non-personnel costs cover? Is that like our fire trucks and equipment for them?
Yes, capital fund, maintenance, insurance, personal protective equipment for firefighters, MetCAD fee paid by the city for the U of I.
Okay, so that includes, this includes the MetCAD fee then, too?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just hoping for more money.
Yes, yeah, and we're working on that on another avenue.
Okay. Other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion? Diane?
I move that we send Resolution Number 2015-09-056R to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Diane, seconded by Eric, to send this to council. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Goes to council. Thank you. Next up is Ordinance 2015-9103, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class BB liquor licenses for Sip Yard LLC at 206 West Main. Mayor?
Well, this is a new business, and they want a liquor license, and we think it's It is a BB license, which is just for beer. Well, maybe beer and wine, but it isn't a complete license. I thought they were just going to do beer.
Maybe it is just beer.
Okay.
There's so many of those categories.
Anyway, we have a whole bunch of licenses, and this is not the biggest one. This is a subset of the major one, so.
Okay. Dennis?
So can I ask a couple of questions about the, I guess maybe about the business, not so much the distribution of the license?
Yeah, I was going to say, Matt Cho, who's the applicant, couldn't attend tonight because of other EDC and related obligations, so.
Yeah, so, I guess I'm going to ask maybe the mayor. Like, there seem to be challenges about the site, how it's set up, that's ADA non-compliant currently, and then Diane Marlin was just commenting recently to me that, you know, that they weren't, they didn't have regular bathrooms, but they were going to use porta-potties. I mean, so all these things come, like, is this business ready to be allowed to have a license? I mean, is there a business here actually?
Nobody's going to open unless they're ADA compliant, and I just heard today about the porta-potties, which concerns me. But, you know, I think the liquor license is a separate thing, so.
Yep, I'll just interject that, you know, I do know that they're, they've got plans for ADA compliance, and, and of course, you know, they can't function until they have the occupancy permit or whatever, but it is an open space.
Well, I did inquire of Libby Tyler. She said Matt's architect is working on the access plans as the city requested, and she's looking into the restroom situation.
Eric?
Yeah, it's sort of a catch-22, so they're starting with Kickstarter, and then they're going to augment that with selling beer, and presumably that's going to, you know, but I think that, I think Matt has a good record. I think Matt has a good record in doing things that are assets to the community. Of course, what he's trying to do is do this with lots of leverage, but I think it's okay.
I will point out that this is an open space adjacent to Cafeteria and Company, which he owns, so...
Yes.
Which has restrooms. So I, you know, this is viewed as a extension of the space there as, instead of a, it's an open space as opposed to a full-blown enclosed restaurant.
Yes, it's seasonal open space. I just, I just think porta-potties in a beer garden is not the image we want to have on Main Street, so I'm hoping there's a better solution for what obviously will be a need if there's beer being consumed in the space. So I assumed Pizza M was the restroom that would be used, so, but anyway, Libby's looking into that, too.
Is there a motion?
I move that we send this item to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Diane, to send this to council. Further discussion?
City Attorney just clarified, BB is beer and wine.
Okay, thank you. And Dennis?
Yeah, so, I'm not against this, but I'm not, I don't think they're ready to be allowed to have a license if they can't even, I mean, if they can't even meet the, any criteria for it being open yet.
They won't be serving liquor unless they're open, okay? And we won't have a business that doesn't meet the ADA requirements.
Okay, I look forward to that improvement.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to pass.
Okay, motion passes. Speaking of liquor licenses, let's just do the other one, which is for, I've forgotten the name of the...
This one is for Lumen Incorporated. This is a CA2 liquor license. It's catering. I don't know anything about whether they are, if they have porta-potties. However, I'm in favor, no, I won't make that joke, sorry. Okay, so I think they're a reasonable company. I don't know if we can actually act on this or just send it...
Yeah, there's an ordinance, but it'll be, it'll be...
Just put it on the agenda for the council.
It'll be new business next week.
So you just want to know about it, or if there's any questions, any questions that I can answer. I will try to.
Was this added to the website? Or no? This wasn't properly noticed? Is that what you're saying?
No, we couldn't, for some reason, we couldn't get it on the agenda, so that's why I added it as a, in addition to the agenda, but we're not going to act on it because it wasn't there in advance.
And it'll appear as new business.
This is just so you can know about it, so we're not going to spring it on you next Monday.
But it came as an email attachment, so we do, we do have it, don't we? I think I remember getting it.
Yes.
Okay, well, you know, I could hand it out. I have been getting over a cold and my brain isn't quite working yet, so, here you go. Sorry about that. I had enough copies here. So, okay, this is just for your information then, okay? And the other thing I have is, I will...
Mayor, this is our first catering license then, right? Under the new...
I don't know if it's our first catering license, but I think we have other caterers besides this one.
This is the third.
Third one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's right, it's listed on there. We already have, well, this is a CA2, this is the first CA2, I guess.
Oh, it's sort of faded out here. That's what it is. I can't read it.
Oh, yeah, it's been crossed out.
Yeah.
Well, you know, technology marches on, but we didn't have a...
Okay, so that CA2 is a two to a three. So this is an item for discussion, it'll appear as new business. Okay, and then, Diane?
I would just let the council know that Lumen is relatively new business. They are located on Goose Alley. I ran into them when I was on the tech crawl on Thursday as part of the Pygmalion Festival, and Lumen is catering the Urbana High School Big Alumni Association Bash in Lincoln Square, so it'll be a big event in Lincoln Square coming up in October. So, we welcome them to Urbana.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
So I guess you can see what the time urgency is, why we didn't want to delay this for another committee meeting.
So it doesn't have an ordinance number or anything? Yeah. Okay, so the next item is a resolution on drinking water.
We're, we keep talking about drinking all the time, but this is about water. And we've had a lot of discussion in trying to get the consent decree passed, and I think there's a consensus that we want to keep working on this and make sure we get good legislation at the state and federal levels to protect water, and also to, I believe, we need to ensure effective monitoring of environmental laws. So, I was at a meeting with Joe Hooker and Patsy Petrie from the county and some other people, and I, when she was asking about whether we were going to move forward, I said we should probably have a resolution to say that we're going to do it. And she sent me an email and asked if she could have a copy of it, so this is what I wrote. So if you guys have any suggestions, we can certainly change it, but this is just to introduce the concept because Patsy did ask for a draft. So I would welcome your comments, but I'm not asking again for action now, just to let you know that I think we should keep working on this. And this specifies that we're going to work on continued public discussion, education, and action, and that we want to work with our coalition partners, that worked very well, I think, in government, as well as citizens groups and the private sector, because I think we all understand the need to protect our water supply.
So will we see this as a resolution next week, or...
I could, I could, I mean, I'll take your comments on it, and if anybody likes it the way it is, we could do it this way, but it has to be drawn up in a formal format.
Dennis?
I think it's an appropriate thing to pursue. Nothing's going to happen unless we continue to agitate, so, you know, this is, you know, one more visible step that we're participating, and, you know, I think the wording is fine. Other people may want to add or subtract, you know, some kind of other commentary, but I think it seems to be effective, and I support it at this point.
Eric?
Yeah, I can't think of any way to improve this, and I think it's very good that we start expressing this as quickly as possible, not only because we should be trying to get action as soon as possible, but hopefully this will help to heal the, some of the divisions that occurred in the, in the end game of the consent decree, because I think everybody on both sides of that discussion will, will agree with this.
Thank you.
Mayor? Yeah, I guess the question I have is, how do we keep the coalition going forward? Do we ask everybody to do, everybody in the coalition's interested in continuing to pass something like this?
I think that would be a good start. I know the City of Champaign is kind of exhausted by this whole process, so we talked about maybe having Urbana take the lead for a while, but I think we should have regular meetings and just keep the discussion going, and it should result in actual legislation. I know our legislators are interested in this, so we're, I think we're ready to move forward.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay. Seeing no further business, we adjourn.